My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I'll just begin the order. Entertain a motion, reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting. Notion. Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. No one? Okay. Proclamation two, three, zero, one, two, eight. A procl- boy. Excuse me. A proclamation declaring May twenty twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lackawanna County.
Okay. Mental health, whereas mental health is a key component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being. Mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels. Mental health conditions are not only common, they are treat- they are treatable, and early and effective intervention can help or can save lives and change trajectories of people living with mental illness. Only fifty percent of individuals with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment. Feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many living with mental illness from seeking help. Untreated mental illness leads to higher rates of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, and suicides. Stigma leads to fear, mistrust, and violence against people with mental illness, who are significantly more likely to be victim- victims than perpetrators of violent crimes. Greater public awareness of mental wellness can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, making it easier for our citizens to see- making it easier for our citizens to seek help. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim May twenty twenty-three to be Mental Health Awareness Month in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Somebody here? Oh, yeah, Marie is here. Mariana Kovich.
Is that guy here?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to the Commissioners for recognizing this month, as Commissioner Shermack said. The stigma discrimination is great, and I think we all realize that we're all touched in some way, and so it's time that we eliminate that stigma, and this is one step towards doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So come on up, we could do a picture, but Marie, Marie is not only a big part of what NAMI does, and she's a big part of our Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance. She's helped create that along with me and Kathy Wallace, so I appreciate all that you do. Supporting the team.
I am.
Let's move over to the center, please.
Over to the center.
Couple, smile.
Boris, you want one?
Well.
Got one?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's an article in the Scranton Times this morning, a grand stat, and that's that due to loneliness, the pandemic, it's a serious issue. So anybody that can be helpful, we appreciate it. Okay, proclamation two, three, zero, one, two, nine.
This proclamation is declaring May fifth, twenty twenty-three as National Corrections Officers and Employees Day in Lackawanna County. Friday, May fifth, twenty twenty-three marks the thirty-ninth anniversary of President Ronald Reagan's designating this week as National Correctional Officers Week. It is also the day that we give, that gives us an opportunity to honor and recognize all the women and men serving in Lackawanna County's corrections system. This is a special week to celebrate and bring awareness to the importance, either as correction officers or support staff, in the significance of your profession. National Corrections Officers and Employees Week is a fitting occasion to honor all our employees at the Lackawanna County prison. President Reagan wrote in the original proclamation, "The professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect." In nineteen ninety-six, Congress expanded the honor to include all the women and men working in corrections. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize our unseen public servants and take this opportunity to honor, salute, and thank the women and men serving in Lackawanna County Corrections by proclaiming May fifth, twenty twenty-three to be National Corrections Officers and Employees Day in Lackawanna County. Thank you.
Guys, somebody, somebody like to say a few words? We have some corrections off- oh, there's the warden, okay.
How are you? Just a couple of quick words. May seventh to the thirteenth, I'm thrilled you're doing May fifth as Correctional Staff Members' Day, but May seventh to the thirteenth is the Correction Employee Week as well. And during this week, we recognize correctional staff who exemplify professionalism, integrity, and strength in the face of a difficult and often dangerous work environment. Correctional officers, counselors, sergeants, lieutenants, captains, et cetera, have a thankless job, but they play a vital role in the criminal justice system. And I, on behalf of everyone who works at the prison, thank you for your recognition as well.
Thank you, thank you for all that you do. Would you guys like to get a picture? You have some of your folks here.
Wherever you want to sit. How are you, sir? Slide everybody down a little, please. Okay. Keep going. Go, Commissioner.
Keep going. All right, I'll go work.
Keep it right there.
I'm good.
It's good?
Are you good?
Up and in a little? There we are, we smile. Couple. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna put this out in our reception area.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you later.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Resolution two, three, zero, one, three, zero.
Proving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers three, five, six, five, two, nine, dash, three, five, seven, zero, zero, five, inclusive, totaling seventeen million fifty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. The county's electronic funds transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling seven million one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-two cents. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, three.
Proving the intermediate punishment grant submission, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the intermediate punishment treatment grants programs grant to the Pennsylvania Commission of Crime and Delinquency in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and zero cents. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Treatment Corps Coordinator, Ms. Mary Liz Loftus.
Mary. Good morning.
Good morning. And I would also like to thank the correction officers for all that you do. With this intermediate punishment grant, what we look to do with this is to help people that are struggling with drugs and alcohol that are incarcerated and get them the treatment that they need. So with this grant, we get this grant yearly. It is to help pay for two full-time salaries, and we also pay partial for two other salaries. We get bus passes and drug tests for probation. We also help the participants pay for treatment and other sober support services and help them with housing if they need housing. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions. Like I said, this is a grant that we regularly get, so.
Thank you. Good job, Mary Liz. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution two, three, zero. Excuse me.
Accepting a proposal from IFIS. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal for family management of the county offices of youth and family services. It enters into an agreement with Families United Network Incorporated to commence immediately and expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning.
Morning Commissioners. This is a, this contract with Family United Network. It's an agency that provides foster care for our county. In addition to having our own homes, we do contract with a number of foster care agencies, this being one. This contract will allow them to increase some of their services in the home, increase visitation, increase supervision.
Anyone have any questions for Bill?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, five.
Proving detention center agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center agreements for the fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four with the county of Bucks and the county of Chester, as attached here to adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
This is just the annual contract with these two counties to provide detention beds when they have vacancies for our juveniles that require this level of containment.
Anyone have any questions for Bill? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, six.
Entering into cooperation agreement with Scott Township, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into cooperation agreement with Scott Township for the Joe Terry Center ADA restroom project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Scott Township Joe Terry Center ADA Restoration Project Two for General Destruction Construction, Woodock Construction LLC, twenty-four oh seven Orphan School Road, Kingsley, Pennsylvania, one, eight, eight, two, six. The lowest most responsible and qualified bidder for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Brenda.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with Scott Township and a contractor agreement with Woodock Construction LLC, the lowest most responsible bidder for the Scott Township Joe Terry Center ADA restroom project in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand dollars. These are standard required agreements for the CDBG program. Any questions?
Thank you. No questions for Brenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, seven.
Ratifying the filing of RACP grant application on behalf of Abington Redevelopment Project Number Two. Whereas, Abington Redevelopment Two Project continues to evolve the adaptive reuse of existing real estate for local use in much-needed medical and neighborhood and commercial venues. The project will expand small business enterprise employment growth and the creation of much-needed tax through the new construction and potential improvements to existing buildings targeted to medical and small business growth. And whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Abington Redevelopment Two Project has proposed, let the county assist Abington Redevelopment Two in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist Abington Redevelopment Two in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these RACP grant program funds. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to ratify, file, and accept, and to accept, an application and award in the amount of one million dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant on behalf of Abington Redevelopment Two for the project. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Ms. Sacco.
Sacco.
Hello again. This resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Abington Redevelopment Two in the amount of one million dollars for a medical and neighborhood commercial venue located on Business Route Six and eleven in Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County. Questions?
No questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, eight.
Ratifying the filing of a RACP grant application on behalf of the Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project. Whereas, the Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project Phases One and Two aims to construct a new living learning education center on the campus of Keystone College located in Lackawanna, Pennsylvan- Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. Funding provided through the grant will include construction of a new three-story addition to the existing Miller Library to create a new education innovative learning center and to outfit this new facility with offered expanded curriculum. And whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Keystone College has proposed that Lackawanna County assist Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project Phases One and Two in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's RACP grant program for the project, and the county desires to assist Keystone College with Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project Phases One and Two in obtaining and administering, administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents, except any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application to and RACP grant awards in the total amount of two million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for two combined one million dollar Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grants on behalf of Keystone College for the Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project Phases One and Two. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
Sacco.
This resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Keystone Living Learning Education Center Project Phases One and Two combined in the amount of two million dollars for a project that entails plans to construct a new three-story addition to the existing Miller Library built in nineteen sixty-eight to create a new education and innovative learning center. The redesigned facility will feature conference and meeting rooms, virtual training labs, and innovative maker space with three D printing, artificial intelligence technology, ceramic engineering, and glass technology. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two, three, zero, one, one, nine.
Ratifying the filing of a RACP grant application on behalf of the Restream Project. Whereas, Restream JSEP Project aims to plan and construct an alternative energy facility with Restream Energy in Jessup Borough, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the RACP grant program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Restream Energy has proposed that Lackawanna County assist Restream Energy JSEP Project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project, and the county desires to assist the Restream Energy JSEP Project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Fund Program Funds, and now therefore be resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application to an award in the amount of one million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a RACP grant on behalf of Restream Energy for the Restream Energy JSEP Project. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Sacco.
Yes, this resolution-
Scrap in there, there's a lot more.
There's, I'm gonna be here a little while. I wasn't here last meeting, so I'm making up for it. This resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Restream JSEP Project in the amount of one million dollars for a project that entails construction of an energy facility in Jessup.
Okay.
Questions?
No questions for Brenda? We'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, zero.
Ratifying a RACP grant application on behalf of the one oh five Corner Street Dunmore Project. Whereas, the one oh five Dunmore, Corner Street Dunmore Project aims to renovate and provide much-needed infrastructure upgrades to the one oh five Corner Street building located in Dunmore Borough. Funding provided through the RACP grant will help to develop a required parking lot for the building and repairs, including roofing and windows, heating, electrical, and plumbing system replacements, ADA accessibility upgrades, and repurposing the building into a mixed use of office space and apartments in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. Whereas, the county of Lackawanna is eligible for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Huftey Holdings LLC has proposed that Lackawanna County assist the one oh five Corner Street Dunmore Project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist the one oh five Corner Street Dunmore Project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these RACP funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application and award in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a RACP grant on behalf of Huftey Holdings LLC for the one oh five Corner Street Dunmore Project. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Sacco.
This resolution is again ratifying and filing an acceptance of a RACP grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in this case on behalf of one oh five Corner Street Dunmore Project in the amount of five hundred thousand for a project that entails renovations and necessary infrastructure.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Questions for Brenda? Excuse me. Anyone have questions for Brenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, one.
Ratifying a RACP grant application on behalf of the Lakeside NEPA Expansion of Facility for Additional Mental Health Services Project. Whereas, Lakeside NEPA Expansion Facility for Additional Mental Health Services Project is to perform renovations and expansion of an existing facility on the Scranton Park in Ohio, way city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. Whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for RACP funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Lakeside NEP has proposed that Lackawanna County assist the expansion of the facility for additional mental health services project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist the expansion of the facility for additional mental health services project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's RACP grant program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to accept an award in the amount of one million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a RACP grant on behalf of Lakeside NEPA for the expansion of the facility for additional mental health services project. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Thank you. This is another RACP filing and acceptance, and this project will allow Lakeside NEPA to expand its current facility to include a thirty-four-bed inpatient rehabilitation to service chemically-dependent men to further assist their struggles with addiction.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Brenda? We'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, two.
Ratifying a RACP grant application on behalf of the Covington Retail Center Project. Whereas, the Covington Retail Center Project involves the development of an unimproved site on State Route four thirty-five, along with a continuous parcel formerly operated as a gas station, into a forty thousand square foot community retail facility complete with significant site improvements, including a paved parking area and enhancements to vehicle access from State Route four thirty-five. And whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the RACP funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Jack Realty Incorporated has proposed that the county assist them in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the Covington Retail Center Project, and the county desires to assist Jack Realty Incorporated in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these RACP funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file and to accept an application and award in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the RACP grant on behalf of the Covington Real Retail Center Project. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this resolution is ratifying the filing and acceptance of a RACP, this time on behalf of the Covington Retail Center Project in the amount of half a million dollars.
Thank you.
Questions?
No questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Question, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, three.
Authorizing an amendment to a RACP grant on behalf of the Wright Center Health and Education Project. Whereas, the Wright Center Health and Education Project entails rehabilitation to an existing property that will convert a building into a health and education center located at five oh one South Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as part of a Phase One completed project in the amount of five hundred fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for RACP funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Wright Center for Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group has proposed that the county assist the Wright Center for Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project, and the county desire to assist the Wright Center for Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's RACP program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County has assisted the Wright Center for Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group in completing Phase One of their project in the amount of five hundred fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars to successfully perform renovations on their leased property located in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas, it is the desire of the Wright Center for Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group to reassign the remaining awarded RACP funds to Lackawanna County to assess the Lackawanna County Department of Health Project in the amount of nine hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these RACP funds, and now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file and accept a remaining amount of nine hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars of the awarded application in the amount of one point five million dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a RACP grant on the behalf of the Wright Center Graduate Medical Education Corporation and the Wright Center Medical Group for the project and to reassign the remaining funds under the grant to Lackawanna County. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing an amendment to a RACP program contract with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Wright Center in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand. This amendment will reassign the remaining awarded RACP funds to Lackawanna County to assist with the Lackawanna County Department of Health Project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, four.
Entering into an agreement with Neighbor Works, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby enter, approve, and enter into a partnership and grant agreement with Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania, eight fifteen Smith Street, Scranton, for the administration of the Aging in Place Program funded by the Whole Home Repair Program. The Board of Commissioners does hereby designate the Director of the Department of Planning and Economic Development as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Lackawanna County and Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania to facilitate the administration of this program. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
Sacco.
Recently, Lackawanna County was awarded two point one million dollars from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Whole Home Repair Program, which will work to preserve affordable homes and improve the quality of life for Lackawanna County residents. This resolution is authorizing an agreement between the Department of Economic Development and Neighbor Works Northeast Pennsylvania for the administration of the Aging in Place Program, which is funded by the Whole Home Repair Program.
Great project. Okay, anyone have any questions for Brenda? Okay, anyone have any questions for Brenda? Intertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two, three, zero, one, two, five.
Entering into an agreement with the Agency for Community Empowerment, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby approve and enter into a partnership and grant agreement with the Agency for Community Empowerment of Northeastern Pennsylvania, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, for the administration of the weatherization and workforce development programs funded by the Whole Home Repair Program. The Board of Commissioners does hereby designate the Director of Department of Planning and Economic Development as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Lackawanna County and the Agency for Community Empowerment of Northeastern Pennsylvania to facilitate the administration of this program. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held on May third, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
And finally, Brenda, your last one.
This is a good one, though. This resolution is authorizing an agreement between the Department of Economic Development and Agency for Community Empowerment for the administration of the weatherization and workforce development programs funded by the Whole Home Repair Program. Information on how to apply for the programs related to the Whole Home Repair Program will be forthcoming on our Lackawanna County website.
Thank you. Okay, anyone have any questions for Brenda? Intertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Resolution two, three, zero, one, zero, nine.
Accepting the proposal from Geograph IT, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal for Geograph IT EBA Engineering to provide on-demand GIS technical support services to be split between the Assessors' Office, Emergency Services Department, and Planning and Economic Development Office. Contract to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2023, and not to exceed $63,900. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May third, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak and pylonize our Director of Assessment and Appeals, Mr. Patrick Tobin.
Mr. Tobin.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a yearly contract that we sign with Geograph IT that supports, gives us support services for the GIS program that we use in the office. It's also shared with the 911 Center and also Economic Development.
Great. All right, anyone have any questions for Pat? Intertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, motions, two, three, zero, one, two, six. I'll make a motion to approve and accept the Environmental Systems Research Institute, quote, for the GIS software licensing.
Second.
Anyone have any questions for Pat? No? Okay, second, another question, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, one that we've all been waiting for, for many years, long before I was here. A motion, I'll make a motion to award the Main Street Blakely Borough Retaining Wall Project to FabCor. 1205 Mid Valley Drive, Jessup, PA, the lowest, most responsible bidder for $2,159,281.35. It's been a long time you've been working on this one, huh?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and-
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll second that. Want to talk a little bit about that, Frank?
Sure, yes. This project would be to replace the retaining wall in Blakely along Main Street, specifically between the Bridge Street intersection and Hill Street. As Commissioner Terry mentioned, we've been waiting for this for years, probably since you started your directorship program.
I think we looked at this about 14 years ago, yeah. We tried to get funding for it about 14 years ago through CGBB money, and it wasn't eligible, so we wouldn't-
All right, why don't you just speak into the microphone so we can, they can hear you.
I said, we've been trying to get this done for 14 years now. We tried to go through CGBB money for it, but it wasn't eligible, and with the help of Brenda's office, we finally came across the funding to get this project going. But 14 years ago, when we looked at it, it was gonna be about $750,000. Now it's almost 2.2 million.
God almighty.
Help the Commissioners, we accomplished that.
Okay, thank you. Well, finally, better late than never, I guess. Okay, I have a second on the motion. Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
June Hoda-Wan, it's Scranton. First, I'd like to make a recommendation with regard to the reassessment effort. I know that this is basically a three-year project, so it's going to go on for a long time, but I, I would recommend that you consider giving the public a quarterly update. What percentage of properties have been inspected, any budget issues, costs, or whatever? To keep it on the front burner and to also keep the taxpayer informed if they have any concerns, issues, just, you know, quarterly would be good, so that, you know, they're not waiting for a bombshell three years down the road. And if we keep the public informed, I think that they'll retain some confidence in the, in the process, so just my recommendation to you, that we don't lose focus on that. And the other thing is, last night at Scranton City Council, I don't know if you watched it or read anything about it, but Bill King, who is the president of City Council, read a letter that the council is sending to the PUC with regard to their concerns and objections about the recent water and sewer hikes for Scranton and Dunmore. Okay, something like 41%. This is not, you know, your typical inflationary increase, and I was wondering if you might want to review what the city council has done and their reasoning, and maybe consider something similar. I don't understand why Scranton and Dunmore are the only communities affected by this increase unless it has something to do with the sale of the sewer authority. But that's just another recommendation, my part. And I understand that you're moving your next meeting to May 18th. Is that because you intend to party hearty and get drunk after your elections?
I wish that were the case, June.
That's the rumor that I'm-
Yeah, well, those days are gone for most of us.
But I understand that both the Commissioners' meeting and the Pension Boards will be moved to Thursday, the 18th. Okey-dokey. And good luck to everybody who's running.
Thank you. As far as the letter, I don't disagree with you. It probably does have something to do with the sewer authority, Scranton Sewer Authority that was, Scranton and Dunmore. And the updates with the reassessment, we've been, you know, we've been working on that continually, and we'll be glad to do something like that. It's, it's a good idea.
Is available online?
It's online.
Well, there's monthly status reports that are updated online, so you can go and read all the documentation.
We'll do it maybe for the next meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
I think more people look online than watch the meetings, in all honesty.
There's an inordinate amount of information that's available online, so it's, it's a lot more helpful to read all of the documentation that we put on there. There's also videos, the locations that they've been, the people that are coming to your house, their pictures, the pictures, the cars that they drive. I don't believe that they have the future locations because they're still in Scranton right now, and that's, they anticipate that that's going to take a long time.
Okay, any, anyone else from the public? Okay, Commissioners, other business, Mr. Schirmack?
I just want to thank Mariana Kovich for attending today and, you know, for her hard work for mental health and, and quite honestly, for all her help with the suicide prevention line. She's been just a very important part of that program. And thank you to our correctional officers and all our staff, they do a great job.
I just want to say with regard to the, it being Mental Health Awareness Month, just if you know anybody who's struggling, don't hesitate to help somebody or try to get them help. And we are making headway, but we still have a long ways to getting the stigma attached to mental health issues, you know, removed or not, to become nonexistent. And as you know, a lot of people with drug and alcohol or substance abuse issues also suffer with mental health issues, so just, if you think that there's something there, even if you're not certain, have the conversation, because it can make a huge difference in somebody's life. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, first Jeffers.
Very quickly, the, just so people understand, the Archbald Retaining Wall is out for design and engineering now, too, and we're hoping to get that out to bid.
Oh, okay, that's, that's great. Larry, do you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
I don't see you often, Larry, so we're gonna make you work for it.
I apologize, I was working in the garage before I got down here, so I'm not dressed for a meeting, but I apologize.
Okay.
Actually, we just met with the borough officials from Archbald yesterday on that wall. Frank's crew has been in design. We went out there yesterday to hear any concerns they had about the construction of the wall and what kind of impact it's gonna have on the community. We also explained to them, where we're at on it, that our next step would be to do some actual soil boring. The plan we're trying to use, and Frank can explain a little more, is what they call soil nails. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna drill through the wall into the soil, and depending on the soil is gonna determine how, how many anchors we need and how far back they have to go. But we explained all this to Archbald, and they're very happy with the progress that's going on. I don't know what Frank anticipates as far as when it's gonna be ready for bid, but I know there's gonna be, we have to get permits, because we're probably gonna actually have to get in the river, build a cofferdam in the river, and get in the river to do this project, so being that it's a trout stream, it's gonna take some time, but Frank can explain a little bit more if he needs.
And how long has this been in the, the works?
We, we've been, we've been monitoring the movement of this retaining wall for years. Larry's been having our, our office and our survey crew do spot, survey checks, just to continually monitor any movement, and it's, I mean, the wall is continuing to move, so it's a much-needed project.
As of yesterday, his measure was 14 and a half inches.
That's, that's the question. So the nails, so the Commissioners don't understand, the nails are gonna go in and push the wall back up against the earth?
No, we can't actually excavate behind it, because that's gonna cause more damage than trying to excavate and pull it back. So what we're gonna do is leave the wall in place, but we're gonna drill through it, and when these rods go into the ground, some types of them, as they go in, you pull them back, they open, and then you put tension against them, so it actually holds the wall from going any further. There's, to pull it back is gonna cause more problems than, we might as well just take it down and redo it.
And once that's done, you backfill it?
Yes.
Correct, yes, yes, the fence that is rotating with the wall, that, that can all get reset, and any of the top soil or loss from, at the top of the wall, that can all get restored. But as Larry mentioned, the wall would, the wall would, I mean, it would stay out of plumb, but the soil, you know, anchors would hold back the wall. We'd also excavate some material in front of the wall, and our thoughts to provide large scour rocks to prevent any future scour erosion as well.
I am one.
As Larry mentioned, the work would have to be done within the stream, so DEB permits will be needed, but that should probably put us into construction for the following year. Those permits will take at least six months, if not longer, to, to obtain.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys, thank you.
One more note, Brian, also they're right now designing the, we were gonna do paving on Main Avenue in Blakely, but the gas company now has approached us, and the gas company's gonna put a new gas main in from Geno Merly Drive to Keystone Avenue. So when they're done, they're gonna mill that road and pave that curb to curb. So we were gonna pave that section in a coming year, but since that's happening, we now are gonna bounce from Keystone Avenue and go to Kennedy Drive. So Frank's crew is gonna start designing on that. We've done the lower half already, they have to do the upper half. Pending any more utility work, we're hoping to have that out for bid next summer.
Right. RACP Bureau will be thrilled with that.
Blakely and part of Archbald.